Thank you, Mayor. As we brought forward to the Commission a couple of weeks ago, we started to talk about some additional things coming forward with American Recovery Plan Act. As we were going through, we kind of put it up into three different areas where we're looking at funds that were lost revenues that were fairly straightforward to where that money would go to help replenish Unified Government operations. And then we have some immediate needs, we noted, but there are also other areas where these funds would be eligible to be expended. So with that process, we brought forward the idea to start doing public hearings, get public input, to assist the Commission as they make decisions and strategize on where this funding can be spent in the future as we go through this process. So tonight Kathleen Von Achen, our Chief Financial Officer, is here and she's going to walk through how the plan works and some of the eligible funding areas. Ms. Von Achen?
Thank you. This is Kathleen Von Achen. I'm the Chief Financial Officer, and this is a public hearing to consult with members of the community, or those communities that have been historically underrepresented or underserved in the federal government with the objective to increase coordination, communication, and engagement with community-based organizations and civil rights organizations. And this is all encouraged by the U.S. Presidential Order on Advancing Racial Equity in Support of Underserved Communities. So no action is going to be taken tonight by the Commission. This is simply an opportunity to take public comments for future consideration of the prioritization of the American Rescue Plan Act local fiscal recovery funds. So additional public engagement events are being planned for the coming months. Before I start, I'd like to direct the public to our ARPA website, which is at yco-kck.org/arp. Or we encourage you to also email us with your ideas at the email address arpa@yco-kck.org. I am joined in this presentation by Ashley Hand, our Strategic Communications Director, who will provide direction for the opportunity for the public to submit your ideas and comments through a poll that she will be leading. And she will be discussing that in more detail after I make this presentation here tonight. It's a brief presentation. So next slide. So this is the local recovery portion of the American Rescue Plan Act. The ARPA is a huge act that entails a great number of federal grant programs and opportunities. This is only the portion that is being provided directly to local governments, in our case, the city and the county. So we are receiving a total of 87 million over a two-year period, and it's actually two recipients, the City of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County, Kansas. The 87 million is the total. City of Kansas City, Kansas, is getting 55 million, and Wyandotte County is receiving 32 million. And the funds are directed in terms of how they can be used, directed by the federal government very specifically. And then also, I want to mention that we have until the end of 2024 to obligate these funds and have until the end of 2026 to completely spend the funds. So there is plenty of time for prioritization and conversation around how to direct the funds to meet the objectives of the Act. So within the total allocation, there is a provision in the Act that a portion of the funds would go towards recovering the lost revenue during 2020 and 2021 due to the pandemic. And as you can see in the chart for Kansas City, Kansas, of the 55 million, 31 million has been calculated based on the provisions of the Act as revenue loss over a two-year period. On the county side, it's 11 million. So that's those two orange numbers there you see. As a result, the remaining amount of funds is 24 million on the Kansas City, Kansas side and 21 million on the Wyandotte County side that are available for other ARPA categories, which I'm going to go over in a moment. And so just to be clear, this isn't a blank check, because the federal government does have some very specific requirements, but it is an opportunity to double down on some of our key priorities. So the other ARPA opportunities, aside from revenue loss, are listed here. They're public health, negatively impacted communities and industries, disproportionately impacted communities, premium pay for employees fighting COVID, and then infrastructure. And in the following slides, I'm going to provide some more detailed descriptions of each of these areas. So in the area of public health, the categories that are eligible uses by the federal government are for vaccination, testing, and contact tracing, for the prevention of incongruent settings such as nursing homes, hospitals, and other areas. It can also be used to do facility repairs that would respond to COVID, such as HVAC improvements. It's also allowed to use the money for communication efforts to get the word out about the vaccination efforts undertaken by the Public Health Department, enforcement, isolation, and quarantine costs, as well as payroll costs related to the public sector that is responding to COVID. There are some eligible uses for mental health and substance abuse and other public health For negatively impacted communities, those eligible costs include household assistance, job training, small business economic assistance, aid to the tourism industry, other economic support, and to rehire public sector staff that were either laid off or not hired, or positions were held vacant during the COVID in order to save costs. Under disproportionately impacted communities, the eligible uses are education assistance, developing a healthy childhood environment, providing housing support, including the development of affordable housing, identifying and addressing the social determinants of health, and providing interventions for community violence. The fourth category is premium pay for employees fighting COVID, not only in the public sector but also in the private sector. And the very last category is infrastructure, which is very limited to only wastewater, stormwater, and broadband. So at this point, we would like to pass this off to Ashley Hand, who is going to be talking about the poll.
My name is Ashley Hand. I'm Director of Strategic Communications. We're going to test a new tool today, and I encourage anyone who's listening in the room or downstairs or online to either text UnifiedGovernment123 to the number 22333, or you can go to pollev.com and enter UnifiedGovernment123. So I'll give you all a minute to do that and get online. And I know all of you have phones, so I hope that you will participate. All right. So when you text that number, you should probably get a prompt back. So if you just give me a nod so I can get a general sense of... You can scan the code as well. Yep. All right. Commissioner Philbrook, I'm more than willing to help you, too. I know you're shaking your head over there. I'm happy to come over and help. All right.
I'd like to remind the Commission that this is for public input, that there will be plenty of opportunities for Commission to weigh in on recommendations later.
All right. We're going to do a quick test question to see if we can test the tool. I just want to get a sense as to if everybody's working. So what is your favorite Kansas City sports team? Oh, well then, we got a strong, solid start. We're going to give everybody a minute to get that in. You check... Here, I'm going to do this. It definitely... It's A, B, C, D, or E. There you go. There you go. That Sporting KC jumped out so quickly, it took away the prompt. All right. So as you can see in real time, we're able to kind of understand what people are thinking, what they're saying. We see it interacting. So the next few questions are an opportunity, and they're open-ended. You can answer more than once, and you can use several words to kind of help us understand how you would answer any of the following questions. All right. So I'm going to see how we're doing here, and we're going to close that. There we go. All right. So clearly, the Chiefs are winning today. All right. I'm going to lock this one down, and we're going to move on to the next one. So our next question for you is just to help us understand who's at the table, who's in the room, who's online virtually. Where in Wyandotte County do you live? Just give us our neighborhood name so we generally understand where you're at. Good Piper representation tonight, seeing some folks from West Heights and Edwardsville, Rosedale, Armoredale, excellent, Argentine, fantastic. All right. Some Bonner Springs folks, Strawberry Hill. Give it one more, a couple seconds more, see how we go. Pomeroy, excellent. All right. Well, Piper is definitely out in numbers today, as is Strawberry Hill and Rosedale. Excellent. And East and West. All right. We're going to give it one more second. Fantastic. So as you can see, we have some pretty good representation across the county, but noting that this is just one meeting and one opportunity, this will help us also kind of figure out where else do we need to go within the community to make sure that we're pinpointing the type of neighborhoods that are not represented at tonight's conversation or on the various channels that we're offering to provide feedback throughout the ARPA process. I'm going to lock this and move on to our first big question, which is what is your most immediate need? So as we think about recovery and what does that look like, in a few words, help us understand what's most important. As you saw in the many different categories that were outlined by Ms. Von Achen, there's quite a few areas where we can provide immediate assistance. So what is the most pressing need in your community, in your neighborhood, and even in your own household? You can enter more than one answer for this question. We're seeing things like affordable housing and workforce. We see parks, pay, infrastructure, business support, a mask mandate, homelessness, parks, increasing rental and mortgage support. Excellent. We're also seeing things like resources for businesses and recreation. There needs to be support in the Northeast, we're seeing. Stormwater, safety. Excellent. Oh, gets get better and better. If you see words that you like, put them in again, and that will make it bigger. Fantastic. It's pretty dynamic. We see it getting a lot of answers. I appreciate that. Childcare. We see some rehabilitation and training. We see food desert has come up. Excellent. Graffiti. We've definitely seen some issues recently. Broadband. Excellent. Some really good information in here. Lower taxes. Okay. All right. This is excellent. I'm going to give it just a couple more seconds because we have quite a few, a couple more questions to go through. And as we get past our most immediate needs, as Ms. Von Achen outlined for us, we do have several years to address some of these priorities. Water quality, air quality, street improvements, education. No bullying for those who can't wear masks. Okay. Sidewalks. Some of these things aren't necessarily covered within ARPA, but they certainly help us understand in the overall arching budgeting process, where are your priorities and concerns? Swimming, that's something that has come up quite a bit this summer, as we all are well aware, and the heat of this week has certainly not made it any simpler for any of us. Excellent. Enforcement. Great. All right. I am going to lock it down in just a second, and we'll move on to the next question. Excellent. Okay. So as we think about the pandemic response, it's not just about what's happening now, but when we think about long-term, what do we want to see for Wyandotte County when we come out of the pandemic? What is the most important response that we can take as a community as a result of what has happened to us over the last 18 months? Food, vaccinations, security. Media, connection to jobs. Excellent. Clearly, we can see some learning happening as we're doing this, that people that are not putting spaces in between the words are making it string together a little bit easier. So that's helping us with seeing things. Economic support, homeless support. Shelter. Excellent. Economics... I'm sorry, said that already. Equity, community. Food has come up quite a bit. Excellent. Healthcare equity. Great. Inclusive housing, care for the sick. Incentives. Great. Equal resources for the Northeast. An eviction moratorium has also been mentioned. Addressing redlining, which is a key, a fundamental principle of ARPA funding. Connection to jobs. I've mentioned that. All right. It keeps changing, so I'm going to give you just one more minute. This is excellent. Equal resources for East and West. You see some very culturally focused collaboration, community. Sustainability has been mentioned. Excellent. All right. I'm going to give it one more second, and then I'll lock this one down. Fantastic. It's gotten... There's so much input here that it's gotten so small. That's a good sign. We'll keep it coming. All right. The last question for tonight is really specific to your community and what would have the greatest impact on your community. We want to know what is most important to you on the long term in terms of ARPA recovery. Did I not activate it? Apologies. There you go. Equitable investment, housing, infrastructure, internet, supporting our food system. Access to opportunity, police presence due to more crime, remote working, transportation. Fantastic. Vaccine education. Increased law enforcement, addressing blight. Representation of neighborhoods like Loring. Housing is a big one. Affordability comes up in many different themes. Parks and recreation. Streetlights, stormwater. Entrepreneurship. Addressing blight and redlining. Great. Food deserts. Direct support to residents. Grocery. Road repair. So there's definitely a lot of common themes across the most immediate needs, but also as we kind of think during, over the long term, we're definitely seeing some consistency in the type of themes that were presented tonight. Bike infrastructure, community pride. Tax sale freeze was mentioned. Youth resources. Stimulus. Excellent. All right. This is great. So I'm going to give this one more minute. Using taxes better or lower taxes. Educational resources. Less of a police presence, so a little bit different than some of the other comments. But that's balance that we are always trying to strike. Fantastic. All right. I am going to close this down because I want to point you to another resource that we will be continuing to roll out as we move forward. So as Ms. Von Achen had mentioned, we have launched a website called yco-kck.org/arp. And what this does is walk you through some of the basics of ARPA funding, how it can be used, provides you with access to the various presentations that have been made over the last several months that have come before Commission, so that you can kind of get a little bit of the background on what this money was intended for and some of the many things that are being considered, including the Commission principles that they've outlined and defined for thinking through the spending of these funds. And then there's also a segment within this website that you can link to and join an online forum, which we'll be running several of these questions over the next month, where you can enter in your ideas. You can support and boost ideas that you appreciate and agree with, or add to them through an online dialogue. So this platform is going to be one of the many tools that we'll be using over the next month or so, specifically to help us understand both immediate needs as well as some of the more near-term needs. That information, in addition to the email that Ms. Von Achen mentioned, arpa@yco-kck.org, is another tool where you can directly email the Finance Department with your ideas and suggestions, and then we will be creating other opportunities, whether online or in person, over the next several weeks, where you can stay tuned and hear more and participate in this ongoing discussion about what the future of Wyandotte County looks like post-recovery. Thank you very much.
Yes, Mr. Bach?
Thank you, Mr. Bach and Mayor, Commissioner Burrows. Ashley, the opportunity to participate, is there any way to break this out, to break it out from staff and/or commissioners putting in their recommendations and flooding the process with their ideas versus actually hearing from the public and allowing them to have an opportunity without being pushed out by staff and/or commission? So that shares with the public that they have a fair opportunity and a transparent opportunity to participate in this process?
Absolutely. So we're offering multiple channels with that intention to give us the ability to check our data and understand what the community has said. We also are pulling from the community survey data of 2020 that was within, with great statistical relevance to our community and reflects how our community thinks. So we're comparing that input as well. I would like to remind you that our 2,200 employees are residents as well, so we will be creating channels for our staff to participate in these conversations because they, too, are part of our community. But we absolutely will be offering multiple channels to help people participate and provide input, leaning from existing planning efforts that have gone out into the community to collect feedback at the neighborhood level, as well as incorporating some of these larger-scale tools that can help us look across the entire county for insights.
And I do appreciate that, just for those that were listening, that they actually have a fair opportunity, just as we do, to put it in.
Absolutely.
I know we're all taxpayers, we're all residents. It's important that they know that we are asking for their input, and we're providing a number of avenues for them to do that.
Correct.
Their word is just as important, if not more important, than many of us in this committee this evening, as well as in the administration and City Hall collectively. So I just wanted to ensure that they understand they have just as fair of an opportunity as we do.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Would someone describe, then, what that process will be moving forward?
So we've launched a website to provide information about the program itself, including some of the limitations of how the funds can be allocated. We've launched a public forum online through that website that allows you to answer any of the questions that we posed tonight, and we'll be posing more questions and survey tools and other insights as we gather them. We're also using the tools of understanding what we're hearing on social media over the last 18 months for us to be able to pull insights from what are key priorities within the community, leveraging our community survey data as well, to help guide some of the insights that we can infer from that information as it applies specifically to ARPA-related funding.
Could you just explain the timeline for this?
So the near term is to run a series of these questions over the next month to help us particularly around the most immediate needs and understanding some of the most pressing priorities within our community. Recognizing that we have a pretty long time horizon, we will be rolling out multiple opportunities over the course of the next six months, possibly even longer, factoring these things into how we plan with our general budget as well. And so there's a lot of opportunities that we'll be introducing. I'm relatively new to this organization and very excited to be bringing more opportunities in for community engagement in these discussions.
And so if someone came to the meeting tonight or zoomed in on the meeting tonight expecting to make public comments, is that happening?
Yes, sir, Mayor. This is Doug. After we conclude our opening comments in this process, we were going to recommend the opening of the public hearing.
Thank you. I'd like to get to that. Commissioner Ramirez?
Yes, that's perfectly fine, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Von Achen, do you have any other comments? Okay, Mayor, we are done with our opening remarks and ready for the public hearing.
And Ms. Cobbins, I think you are facilitating this?
We will be facilitating it, Mayor.
Thank you. It's all yours.
Okay. Actually, we had one person sign up, Ms. Carolyn Wyatt, to speak this evening, when we also have four emails to read behind that. this evening, when we also have four emails to read behind that.
Go right ahead.
Ms. Wyatt, are you available?
Ms. Wyatt, you're muted. Carolyn. All right, let's go ahead and read the emails and then we can come back to Mrs. Wyatt.
Thank you, Mayor. First email is by Megan Pfeifer from Uncle Sam's Academy for Tots. It says, hello, I have received the invitation to the Zoom meeting next week. Our center would like to look at applying for funds to use in this area, provide to provide premium pay to eligible essential workers. I would also like to ask if these funds be allowed to pay for college courses as well as essential workers like our teachers who will be dealing with many more developmental and mental and or mental health issues as more businesses reopen. It will be crucial that employees have the tools they need to de-escalate or interpret a situation with the general public and our customers. Thank you for your consideration, Megan Pfeifer. The second is from Paula Neath from President and CEO of the Family Conservancy. We know Wyandotte County is looking at investments of the American Rescue Plan, funds to support our community in recovering from the pandemic while improving long-term resiliency. The Family Conservancy believes in investment in our childcare infrastructure for our youngest children and their families is exactly what Wyandotte County needs. A $4 million investment of ARPA funding over two years would be strategic in the commissioner's priority for increased economic prosperity of the community and an opportunity for our residents to get back into the workforce. This support would be targeted towards expanding the Family Conservancy's innovative Start Young Program through 2022 and 2024. TFC is confident long-term investments in the infrastructure of the childcare sector in Wyandotte County will provide stability for parents and help make much-needed improvements in the early learning classroom today through a quality learning environment, all while building of the foundation for the next generation's local workforce. Furthermore, we have three years of success and momentum to build from. If you would like, I would be happy to discuss investment opportunities in more detail. Paula Neath. The last is quite lengthy, so I'll paraphrase this. I should say the next to last from Ms. Carrie Rinker from the American Heart Association. She says, the public health crisis and resulting economic stress that has put state, local, and tribal governments under immense strain. As you are aware, the federal government's Treasury Department has allocated $350 billion emergency pandemic funding to state, local, territorial, and tribal governments. The American Heart Association understands we are still navigating unprecedented times. Give us some and given some of the flexible guidance and latitude to support public health needs and recovery efforts. The AHA views this latest distribution of pandemic relief funds as an opportunity to reengage in discussions to address critical needs, areas, and strengthen support for vital public health services. Some of those services include the comprehensive tobacco control programs, hypertension programs, healthy equity programs, and supplemental nutrition assistance programs. We must recognize the intent of ARPA funding to state and local communities to is to address the severe negative economic impact of the pandemic and ease some of the financial strains from the past years. Feeding recovery and rebuilding capacity requires strategic investments and collaborative efforts at all level. Although we are faced with unique challenges, we can use these fiscal recovery funds as an opportunity to lead the change or the charge in critical public health investments to benefit Wyandotte County's population. Thank you again for your ongoing leadership in responding to the needs of the communities and citizens, especially those that were hit hardest. The AHA asks that you consider the above referenced priority areas as you engage in appropriation discussions, and we look forward to continuing to work with you to address the health issues and longstanding inequities facing Wyandotte County. I just received one on my phone here, which I have now opened from Emily Wolf with the Metropolitan Energy Center. She says, Mayor Alvey and Commissioners, I am with Metropolitan Energy Center and a lifelong resident of Wyandotte County. Since 1983, MEC has successfully managed millions of dollars in federally funded projects advancing clean, efficient use in the Kansas City metro area, including Wyandotte County and KCK. In an attached letter, we stated why we are urging the UG to consider investing remaining funds from the ARPA to improve the infrastructure in our community. As you continue to work through the process to determine how to utilize the remaining ARP funds, we will, we would love to meet with you to share how our organization can support your efforts. We have over 20 years of experience and expertise promoting and implementing clean fuels, fuel efficiency, and new transportation technology. Additionally, our Building Performance Program is rapidly expanding to help municipalities successfully navigate building code updates to make the built environment more efficient and resilient. Thank you for your efforts to better understand the projects and priorities that are important to community members. Please let us know if you would like us to set up a meeting in the future. Thank you. That is all we have, Mayor, except for Ms. Carolyn Wyatt, who is, I think, now ready.
Thank you. Mrs. Wyatt?
Unmuted. Okay, hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, I'm Carolyn Wyatt. I live at 359 Troop, KCK, Northeast area. There was a master plan, Northeast Master Plan, that never came came to the process where shit had come. We spent money, but we need a store in the Northeast area. Also, the Quindale Pool, it needs to be a new one or upgraded. Also, in these parks around here is clam and Quind, not Quindale, but Parkwood Park, we could also use a water park. And also, these parks should have bigger swings, also not only for the children, but older people like to sit and swing. They take their kids to the to the park. I've seen where they have parks for senior citizen where they can sit and they can swing at the same time. Also, we need a diversity inclusion officer because there's one in Lawrence, Kansas, and one that's in Kansas City, Missouri. And also, there is a lot that could be done to Northeast area. There is not a police station in Northeast area, which would bring along development at the same time because we don't have the infrastructure. We don't have what we need. But we know that with this Northeast Master Plan that already we've paid people who came here to get information about the master plan and paid them all this money, they went back home, but nothing happened. So I think everybody's getting their master plan, but we're leaving the inner city out of everything. So I'm thinking that with this money that we have here for the American Rescue Plan Act, Recovery Act, and with the CDG money, there is money that can be invested in Northeast area. And so we're hoping that the commissioners who are listening will realize this also. Everything is not out West. We still live down here.
Ma'am, you have one minute remaining.
And we have a mayor and a commissioner that is for the whole city. You can't leave out the Northeast area. We're very vital. There's all kinds of highways down here. Either way you want to go, up north, Kansas City, Missouri, we're here and there's Fairfax. And so I just want to say, just remember the Northeast area. Thank you. Bye.
Mr. Mayor, we have Louise Lynch online.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Lynch.
Yes, thank you for that. I've been holding from the beginning of all these meetings, and so I appreciate you taking my call. The first thing I wanted to talk about before I comment is the process during this ARPA problem of the IT. I have not been able to participate because it kicks me out. The other thing is, it is not easy for someone who is having trouble seeing, as I am, as a result of long haulers COVID to maneuver this or to tell me to type in or email in or any of those sorts. So if it's difficult for me, I am sure it is difficult for many seniors. I am sure it's difficult for those who cannot see or have a vision problem. And we should be able to participate as the same time as everyone else's meeting. To tell us to send in something between now and another time does not give us the same opportunity and respect to voice our opinion for everyone to hear at the same time. So all of those questions you were asking and having people input, it would kick me out every single time. I have not been able to look at screens because of my vision issue due to long haulers, and so this is a huge problem. So I really would like you to make sure that this is a viable way for everyone, not just those who can see, not just those that are young, not just those that are technically challenged or not challenged. All of us deserve a voice at the table at the same time. And now I would like to comment about the ARPA. In regards to that, I have sent in comments and I have had a two-hour discussion with the Chief of Staff from the mayor's office back in April, May time period in regards to some of my concerns.
Ma'am, you have one minute remaining.
A call from Mayor Alvey. BPU is a huge issue. People who are not able to pay their bills because of they are medical devices that they need to use and don't have the money due to COVID should be totally covered. Water should never be cut off from anyone. We are in the middle of a very hot heat season and making the most vulnerable suffer because they are indigent or they are sick and have to choose what to do is not acceptable. I have a whole list of things I would like you to call me, email me, text me, because there are a lot of issues that this money should be going to and going to agencies like YCO Mutual Aid, who have helped a lot of people in a lot of areas in this community. And I want to thank my commissioner, Tom Burrows, for helping as many people as he can.
Ma'am, your time is up.
Thank you.
Next, we have Broderick Crawford.
Once again, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners Broderick Crawford, Kansas City, Kansas, Northeast, right off of Eaton State. I'm going to also raise the same issue that I had before, similar to what the previous speaker just spoke to, and that's access. So tonight, as I was trying to get to the word cloud that Ashley was putting together, I don't have equal use of both my hands. So by the time it took me to type and get the things that she wanted me to type in, she was at two or three questions now. So I think many of our, what we're putting forth to the public is accessible to those that are people close to, and we are not necessarily taking in consideration those that may have challenges. And so for me, I got frustrated and I stopped responding because I couldn't type fast enough. Okay, so and again, as the young lady was talking about, those that are visually impaired and other things that they have other options we have. We have a lot of our folks here that have government-issued flip phones. A government-issued flip phone is not going to do all the things I'll I'll say phone. I just need a phone to call and text. But I'm probably one step beyond a flip phone myself. Okay, so the types of phones that people have when you're asking for these apps, all of these phones don't accept or maneuver or navigate through these apps the same way that others' phones might. Are we taking that in consideration? Electronic media broadband is not widely available in this county, much different than Google would like you to believe. It is not there. So in the homes of many of the residents that I serve, they don't have broadband. So if that's the only access point, then we're not reaching the masses of folks in our county.
Sir, you have one minute.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I also want us to consider funding to the Northeast, funding to the Parks and Rec, folks that are getting their lights and things turned off for 45 cents. It's atrocious. And I'm going to challenge you all. Who do we want to make it easier for? The staff or the residents? And I do understand the staff are residents, but staff are working. There are many residents that are unemployed, that are hurting, that are in peril, that we're not providing access to. I'd like for us to consider folks that don't necessarily have what we have and they have a fair and equitable chance to provide comment. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Greg Kendall.
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great, great. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, and UG staff. My name is Greg Kendall, President of the Wyandotte Economic Development Council and a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. There are eight areas we'd ask the UG to consider for ARPA funds. One, increased funding for community health improvement programs known as CHIP through the UG Public Health Department. The programs are already underway with goals, strategies, and metrics in place. The challenge is often funding the strategies themselves. Two, additional funding to support small business assistants that have struggled through the pandemic. We encourage funding specifically for the toolbox, alt cap for small business loans to Wyandotte County businesses, and additional funding for the UG Small Business Grant Program. Three, funding up to $150,000 for a future of work study via the YEDC to look specifically at the talent skills needed to be ready for the jobs anticipated to be created in Wyandotte County in the years to come. We need a long-term workforce solutions plan to help us build resilience and ultimately reduce poverty and increase household income while connecting our residents to the high wage jobs in Wyandotte County. Four, funding for programs that lift residents out of poverty through attainment of their GED through collaborative efforts like those being discussed through Made Men, Workforce Partnership, KCK Community College, and YEDC. 19% of Wyandotte County residents have no high school diploma, largely ensuring a life of poverty and poor health, and who have been heavily affected by the pandemic. Five, funding for programs to assist persons experiencing homelessness. We are seeing an increase in the number of our neighbors who are homeless. This is affecting the attraction and retention of businesses to the downtown and certain public transit locations throughout the county. We recommend identifying and funding programs that provide housing, wraparound services, and a sheltered workshop model that looks holistically at the issue. Six, if you want to expedite urban housing development, we could consider a flexible funding matrix to help fill the gap, particularly as the cost to construct residential homes has significantly increased.
Mr. Kendall, you have one minute remaining.
Quality housing, the UG largely holds the land that needs to be redeveloped, and we have a pool builders now interested in building homes. Unfortunately, there's a gap between what our residents can pay for a home and the cost to build a home. This may be an opportunity to help fill that gap if certain criteria met. Seven, we need additional funding to increase the number of full-day quality childcare spots through organizations like the Family Conservancy. Childcare is incredibly expensive, but has a major long-term impact on that child's future and whether Wyandotte County will continue to have a high level of poverty. We encourage further discussion on how ARPA funds can help our underserved populations find and afford full-day quality childcare. And number eight, we encourage you to consider utilizing some level of ARPA funds to start the Stormwater Improvement Program. While these funds won't meet all the needs we have, we believe there is a cost benefit to the community and to the UG, which could expedite getting these improvements started. Thank you for your time and consideration for the use of the UG's ARPA funds.
Our next speaker is Dustin Hare.
Thank you. My name is Dustin Hare. I'm the co-founder of YCO Mutual Aid. We know that COVID-19 had profound impacts on the economic situations of nearly everybody in the country, but it affected low-income, black, and brown folks disproportionately. And in Kansas City, Kansas, that means it impacted the Northeast area disproportionately. To put this into context, in the upcoming tax sale that's happening in October, there are 265 properties labeled residential with improvement. This means these homes have fallen behind on their property taxes and those properties are and those properties are heavily concentrated in the Northeast area. Instead of making assumptions about these properties, I went out earlier this week and talked to some of the folks that are on the tax sale list. What I learned is that a lot of these people have owned their homes for years, but fell behind on their taxes because of COVID. The people I talked to were almost entirely on fixed incomes and had additional financial burdens directly caused by COVID-19. The total sum of the back taxes comes to exactly $1 million. Now, it can be assumed that many of these properties are not currently being lived in, and they would not need to be removed from the tax sale list, but many others are currently being lived in. Several hundred thousand dollars of ARP money could be invested into ensuring that people who have lived in our community for years or decades are not forced out of their homes in displaced. And speaking of housing, Wyandotte County has a homelessness problem that is unaddressed and worsening. Housing-first solutions to homelessness are needed and should be funded by the ARP funds. This means converting landbank properties into suitable housing and hiring community members to do the rehab to make them livable, a priority that has been identified by Wyandotte County residents who are experiencing housing insecurity. It also means purchasing apartment buildings, such as the currently vacant West High Apartments, fixing them up and converting them into housing. And it means opening a transitional shelter in Wyandotte County for folks experiencing homelessness because this is something that our county is currently lacking. Housing insecurity is the scariest thing that folks in Wyandotte County are dealing with, and it is exciting that we have this opportunity.
Sir, you have one minute remaining.
Thank you. Housing insecurity is the scariest thing that folks in Wyandotte County are dealing with, and it's exciting that we have this opportunity in front of us to make a difference in the lives of our residents. Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tanise Tyler.
Thank you. Once again, Tanise Tyler with Northeast Economic Development Corporation, Executive Director. The first thing I wanted to comment on was the kudos to the Communication Director for Attending New Technology. I think it was pretty cool how the poll and everything worked. However, I have a couple of text messages where my poll didn't go through. Happy to share that with you and work with you on how that could be improved because I'm not sure how many other people may have had an issue. So would love to connect with you offline to share what happened here. In regards to the funding, and I don't know if you all, well, you all should be familiar with the TAP, with the Urban League Institute. There was a technical assistant, assistance panel that was done where they enlisted the experts or some of the real estate professionals within the area in regards what to do with the Juniper, Juniper Garden area. I would recommend that some of the funding go directly towards those efforts that were presented in the TAP. If you are not familiar with that presentation or what was presented, I'll be happy to share the link. There's a whole presentation on that. So I just wanted to provide my input for funding to be looked at to go directly in the Northeast area towards that plan that was developed. And it is in regards to workforce housing, or excuse me, workforce development, housing, and some other things. So if anyone would like the link to that or more information on that, I'll be happy to provide it. And I'm done speaking. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Melvin Williams. Mr. Williams, you're muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. My sentiments is with a lot of people on here. With Ms. Wyatt, Broderick, we do have a homeless problem. But at the same time, I would say, focus the funds on the Northeast area because during the whole time of the pandemic, the Northeast has been hit the hardest. And before I get off of here, I have a question for my current Commissioner Townsend. Commissioner Townsend, where are we at on this Northeast Master Plan?
I'm going to ask that this is not really the, the agenda item that we're bringing. So I ask Commissioner Townsend, please, that's not what this is about. You can have an offline conversation with Mrs. Townsend if, if you please. If you are done speaking, we'll move to the next speaker.
I would have a, a offline conversation with her, but my Commissioner never calls nobody back. Have a good day.
Our next speaker is Mamie. Ma'am, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. This is Mr. Springs. My question, well, hi to everyone. My question is, when will we be able to address, everybody sit down and address the systematic racism that is going on? You talk about an economic development plan, but there has nothing really been put in place for the African-Americans. So it'd be nice to like sit down and be able to address that because this is a diverse community, and also this is a free state. And I would like to know when are African-Americans going to be involved in the economic development plans as well? That's all. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Alan Carr. Mr. Carr, you're muted.
Hi, this is Alan Carr. I'm the Executive Director for Visit Kansas City, Kansas, and I'm a resident of Kansas City, Kansas. You know, I, I want to speak in, in, in support of tourism initiatives. As many of you know, the tourism industry has been one of the hardest-hit industries during COVID, and I know one of, one of the categories you're looking at are negatively impacted industries. Our hotels in Wyandotte County have seen approximately 45% decrease in revenues during, in 2000 compared to 2019. That amounts to about $48 million in lost revenue for our, our hotels here in Wyandotte County. And, and I know our tourism partners would love to see some opportunities to, to help make up for some of those losses. But I think one of the things that, that our tourism partners really want to see is the opportunity to grow tourism and, and to use these funds to help us grow tourism and make us a more attractive community. And, and the type of things that visitors are looking for here are really the same thing that residents are looking for. We, we want to support, we'd love to see programs that will support stronger neighborhoods that will make us a safe and welcoming community, that will improve our infrastructure, and that will, that will improve our public parks and spaces to make us a more attractive community for, for visitors. Specifically on tourism initiatives, I, I think there's two things that, that we would love to see. One, as Kathleen mentioned earlier, I think there's an opportunity to use some of the funds for some mitigation and prevention program around improving ventilation systems in some of our tourism attractions, and so we would be supportive of, of those funds. We, we also would support job training. We know that we have a challenge right now in getting enough hospitality employees to fill our tourism businesses, and we would love to see some funds that we can grow that workforce. This is not only a short-term issue, but it's a long-term issue as, as we add more hotels and attractions here in Wyandotte County. We need a strong.
Sir, you have one minute remaining.
And, and we'd love to see some funds dedicated to some, some training programs to, to get some Wyandotte County residents into some, some hospitality training and culinary programs here in the community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Professor Stafford Gray. Professor, you're muted.
Yes, this is Professor Deborah Stafford Gray, and my, my question is about the ARPA Community Block Grant. What I need to know is, does, does a group from our neighborhood, do we need to get together in order to do this block grant? And the only way to apply would be for the feedback on the website or email? If someone could give me more clarity on that, I'd appreciate it. My concern is, we have storm management problems in our area. We have a lot of flooding in our area over here on 67th and Webster. I thank, I thank Dr. Jane Philbrook from coming to our residents to, to see about the problem. But the problem still exists. So as a result, some of us have had to get loans to get our foundations of our houses sealed from the flooding, but there's some engineering that needs to be done in the area. So I would like to see some of the funding goal as far as storm management, but I was just concerned about the Community Block Grant Development Plan. Do you need to have a group in order to do it? That's my question, and thank you.
Our next speaker is Susilla Jones. Ms. Jones, you're muted.
Sorry, I was just getting reconnected. Hi, I am Susilla Jones. I am the Executive Director with Cross Lines Community Outreach in Kansas City, Kansas. There are so many great items that have been brought up today, and I, I can't disagree with anything that, that people are proposing that the ARPA funds get utilized for. I would say that this is, ARPA provides us with the opportunity to take a truly collaborative approach to end homelessness in our community and also create truly affordable and accessible housing. These are challenges that we face every day at Cross Lines, and I fully support everything that Dustin Hare, the recommendations he had for some sheltering options. We also are in full support of converting hotel, a hotel or motel into sheltering options for folks experiencing homelessness, with also the ability to maybe turn that in also to some permanent supportive housing as well. The ARPA funds, from my understanding, can help, help us with that process, and you do have some, some hotels available that may, may, may fit that. But again, we support sheltering options that provide permanent supportive housing with wraparound services to provide long-term sustainability so that we can address homelessness not just right now, but in the long term. I would also like to mention Cross Lines is in Armordale, so is in a business in Armordale. And also, as we work with residents in Armordale, we face infrastructure issues, specifically stormwater issues on a continual basis. So we are also in full support of any storm, stormwater issues that we can address specifically within Armordale to help residents and businesses in our community. So that is what I have. Thank you very much.
We have Louise Lynch seeking to, to speak.
No, no, no. We, she's already had a chance to speak.
We have no other hands raised.
Thank you. So, Mr. Bach, that concludes the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes all the comments by, from us for this. We do have this outlined to come back to the Commission on August 12th for presentation, so we'll be able to provide additional information for the Commission to consider. We'll be able to hopefully weave in some of these comments that we received from the public hearing tonight and any additional feedback. As was noted earlier, we're not in a decision of making final decisions on it. We will be looking to make some immediate decisions and ask for that for Commission consideration at the end of August, as we have several things in the area of healthcare that we need to do to continue to, to provide our fight against COVID and the variant as it continues to attack our community. I think that's a very serious thing, and we need to direct money for that now by the end of the month. But there, as Ms. Von Atchen outlined as she went through the presentation earlier, there is still money that we'll be able to go through and prioritize in the coming years we go through this process. Mayor, that concludes Staff's presentation.